Of course, as long as, you know, our friends out there are fine with it. I don't want to have a mob on my hands. Hi. How are things on the east side? I guess that's why you're here. We're going to find out. Welcome. Too much technology. Those are the olden days. Oh, the old fashioned way. I like that better. Sorry. I say it anyway. I think people need to know. All right, are we ready to go now? Welcome, everyone. Like to thank you all for coming out for tonight's Clear Lake City Council meeting, being held tonight at the City Council Chambers located 14050 Olympic Drive in Clear Lake. Today is Thursday, August 3rd, 2023. It is 6:02 PM, 18:02. We're also broadcasting live on YouTube and Zoom for those who are not able to attend physically. That Zoom link is published. And now we've got an echo. Are we good, Madam Clerk? Yes, we are. All right. Then, without further ado, could you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Sloton?
Here.
Councilmember Overton?
Here.
Councilmember Kramer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Claffey?
Here.
And Mayor Perdott?
Here. Chief Hobbs, would you mind leaving it, leading us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you would, I'd just like to have a moment to congratulate the city for a successful Tuesday night, National Night Out. The chief was briefing me a little bit. I think we had, how many, chief? Four hundred arrived? At least that's how many hot dogs and hamburgers we went through. I'd like to thank the chief for having those. It's great to see everybody come out and utilize our parks. I hope everybody's careful this summer. And of course, this weekend coming up, we do have a heat warning, so I hope you're all safe. And with that, let's begin the meeting. Madam, our City Manager Flor, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No modifications, Mr. Mayor.
Bring it back to council for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Second. A motion by Councilmember Kramer and second by Councilmember Sloton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, or nay if opposed. Thank you very much. Moving on to presentations, we're happy to receive and welcome our Lake County Tourism District Annual Report. Sir, if you wouldn't mind coming up and introducing yourself?
Thank you. I am Brian Fisher, the Executive Director of the Tourism Improvement District, doing business as Visit Lake County CA. And I wanted to thank councilmembers for welcoming me in. Melissa, thanks for setting it up. And Clear Lake staff, thanks for having us in here. We'll give you a pretty good overview of how 2022 went for us. And can I pull this out and walk with it? Because it's easy for me to see with the front row. So this is annual 4th, 2022, 19 for 2022. We do this every year as part of our bylaws. And we're going to look at board members. Hasn't changed a ton since we, not last time, two of them are sitting right here. We're going to look at the economic impact of tourism from some data from Visit California. We're also going to look at our marketing program review, an overview. What do, how do we judge our success? And we're going to also look at the district renewal, something that was near and dear to all of our hearts this past year. First off the bat, here's our board members again. I won't take you through, but I'll kind of introduce you to a couple of new board members. We've got Alfredo Haverio, who is the CEO or the general manager and the CFO of Robinson Ranchery. We're excited to have him on the board. We had kind of another gentleman in his seat who didn't do it, who wasn't very present. So Alfredo is a great new board member, I'm happy about that. And Susan Parker, I don't think this last time around was on our board. It was Jessica Pyska at the time we met last time, so Susan's on the board as well. So most of the board has stayed pretty steady, and they do a lot of work. They show up, we have a board, we get things done. So how do we measure our marketing success? We look at our website traffic in the destination marketing world. We also look at social media growth, engagement, what are they doing with it? We look at campaign impressions and performance. This is the paid media that we buy. We also look at our email database and how it's growing and how it's evolving. We look at our marketing partnerships. We have several marketing partnerships. And we look at public relations, something that everybody needs to do. And we kind of skim by with the little that we have. So right off the bat, let's look at revenue for 2022. It was down 24% from 2021. Kind of a brutal number when we started looking at this. We had over $463,000 in revenue in 2021. It was obviously a pandemic kind of phenomena. We had a lot of people up here, no place for folks to go. People got their car, they drove. We were a great destination. 2022 was kind of a little bit more of a reality check for us. And there's also some other issues in there that we can talk about if you'd like. Here it is by district. So we have two districts with two contracts. The Lake County TID was down almost $100,000 between 2021 and 2022. And part of that is we run our books on a cash basis. Part of that was just the way that we receive funds from the county. It was really slow under our last tax collector, and it was pretty painful, the way we received those funds. We didn't get a quarter that ended in September of 2020 until February of 2021. So it pushed it into a whole nother year for us. But as you can see, it doesn't make budgeting very easy when you're out there trying to do media spending and such. The TOT was down a little bit. There was also some different payments there. Clear Lake was down about, I guess that's about $4,000 or $8,000. Lakeport was down a couple hundred bucks or a couple thousand. And Twin Pine Casino in our two contracts, Robinson, were up pretty significantly. We had some good partnerships with those guys, and we're going to keep working those as best we can. So economic impact of tourism in Lake County, these are numbers from Dean Runyon and Associates, which is a research firm that Visit California employs. And they take a look at, they look at daytime trips, overnight trips in the state of California. They use geofencing data. They basically come up with these numbers. Some of them are kind of out there. But the whole idea of it is, is you can see, we really haven't recovered from the pre-pandemic highs that we were at in 2019. They look at travel-related spending, which is everything that people spend when they travel. For every, you know, for every buck a person spends in a hotel, they're going to spend $3 outside of that hotel stay. Somewhere in your restaurants, they're going to, they're going to buy gas in the lake, they're going to go out of the boat. We're going to do all sorts of stuff. So that economic impact is $175 million for the county of Lake. And it contributes about $13 million in tax revenue to both local and state. And it employs about 1,800 people. Tourism or hospitality in the state of California employs over a million people. In our county, it's just a little over, over, over 1,000. So one of those other metrics that we use in destination marketing is our website traffic. It's kind of the Holy Grail. It's what we have. It's, it's the way people, it's the way people look to figure out where they're going to go and what they want to do. Our, our website traffic in 2022 was up 12% to 464,000 page views, which is, was great, considering our budget's been far down. We had a lot of new users, up 11%. And sessions were up again, 8.7%. So some good numbers. What do people look at? They're, they're coming from the major cities, they're, they're places that we want to reach. And they're looking for, for a lot of stuff that, you know, would be very common up here. Cabins accommodations, they go to our homepage, they look at our events, outdoor recreation, and then along the whole Harvard Hot Springs. If you Google "Hot Springs in Lake County," you get our website about five times before you're going to get Harvard Hot Springs' website. So we get a lot of traffic in there. They, they backlink to us. Their website has, on their homepage, a link to our website. So it's, it's a mutual reciprocity. We get back and forth. But I always think that's interesting, how high they are. And whenever I go out there, they always tell me, "We don't, we don't, we don't need you, we don't do anything." It's like, okay, that's great. But Harvard Hot Springs, so that's, that's how we look at our website traffic.
Mr. Mayor? Do you mind if I ask a question?
Yeah, go for it.
Can you go back to the last one? So I missed the last meeting, so maybe you presented this, but I don't recall Modesto being on the list before. Do you have any idea what happened there?
Yeah, so there is a slide here, a couple of down. We did some market research. The agency did Medium Giant and did another look at some of the data about who is visiting Lake County. And we had, we actually bumped up Sacramento, or excuse me, Santa Rosa came up higher, and Modesto showed up for the first time. So, and Yuba City. So those are areas that we, we put a little bit more in our search and our social, our paid search and social, I guess. So yeah, Modesto. Organic social media. Organic social media, like I said, is pretty much our secret sauce. It is, we do it really well, and I don't do it. I just oversee the woman who does it. But she does a really good job. She can not only shoot photography, she can also write really good posts. She knows how to get it organically out there. We get a lot of shares off of our stuff. We pushed hard on paid social media to have people follow us in 2021. And in 2022, we pushed hard to grow our Instagram followers, and that's why the number there increased by 32%. So those are great. The numbers, the cities are the same, you know, exact cities, but we got Stockton instead of Modesto in the paid social, or in the organic social. But organic social is really a very bright star for us. It's, it's great to have. Paid search, this is the stuff that we paid Google. And last year, we even tried a little bit of paid search on Bing, which was a total disaster. Bing, it's just, I don't know. But we, we were seeing it come in organically, and we thought, okay, well, maybe there's a lot of people that still are searching on Bing. And so we threw a couple thousand against it, and truthfully, it was a disaster. It was like, stop, we stopped it within like three or four days, it just didn't really work. But our paid impressions were pretty much down across the board. Well, you know, you spend less in paid search, you're going to get less in paid search. It just is, it's a pay-to-play kind of game. But our top performing keywords are cabins in California, vacations in California, vacation cabins in California that work in Clear Lake. And then we buy ad performing groups as well, and none of it's really too shocking, but we pay close attention to these. We buy hundreds and hundreds of keywords, and we really try to refine down to which are the ones that are driving the most traffic for us with the most clicks. Our click-through is, you know, fairly chunky at 7.43. That's, that's a pretty good CTR on paid search. So those are also some of the numbers that we look at. Paid search delivers the most traffic to our website. Most traffic comes from paid search. Programmatic display, these are ads that we ran. They, they, they're, they're not videos, but we try to like make them look like videos with the still advertising, kind of like the Ken Burns effect. About 1.7 million impressions, 1,600 clicks and 964 conversions. So just a lot of numbers thrown at you, but we try to do as, you know, as much with as little as we have. Video performance is also, we only buy over-the-top TV and connected TVs, so we don't buy any of your linear programming. We're not on the Giants game, we're not in any of those places. We could never afford that. But we buy YouTube, we buy Pre-roll, and, you know, again, it delivers a lot of impressions and, and people, you know, the completion rate is really good. People will watch our video before they shut it off. And we buy eights and fifteens, so it's really short stuff, over quick. We ventured for the first time into influencer marketing. Influencer marketing is an entirely new category, a whole new, really silo of media that didn't exist, you know, just a few years ago. Now it's kind of the hottest thing going. It's a hard thing to figure out what to do because, you know, people's audiences can be so far off from your audience. They can, you know, we don't really need to reach people in New York City, so it's great that you've got a lot of followers in New York City. Those people are not coming here. We don't have people in our market area. So we worked with a company, a two couple, a one couple, really cool people that have a site called Don't Forget to Move. The other thing that we did, and the agency negotiated this hard, is we wanted to own all our hard assets. We needed all the video and everything they shot when they were here. And then we took all of that stuff, which was about 15 minutes of video, 15 images, and we cut it all into our commercials. We used it all in our, our paid advertising. And it was great because it was the freshest stuff that we had. They did six social posts, two blogs and two vlogs. And then I had a great experience. The year before that, we had California Through My Lens come into the county during COVID. It was this crazy thing. It came with this light, and it's two, I think they were like eight-week-old twins. And so, yeah, crazy visit. And long story short, I ran into a couple about a month ago, young couple, staying at the state park at the brewery. And I said, "How did you find Lake County?" Because I always ask people, "Where did they find us?" And "How did they get here?" Because they were kind of, you know, kind of lost. And they said, "Well, you know, we help, we follow this guy on social media. His name is, and he's California Through My Lens." I was like, "Yes, I'll look that." So people, people do follow a lot of these folks, and they do learn a lot about where to go. So that was our first venture. And if we had more resources, I would do a lot more of this. I think this stuff is really powerful. And the way the agency negotiated the assets was huge. Because for us, it's about five grand, and that's just almost nothing. That's not even getting a model there. So it, it was, it was really, really well worth it. Paid social on Facebook and Instagram, again, you know, we were really pushing hard paid social. So your, your increase was pretty huge, 80% increase in impressions. And, you know, it's good stuff. Oh, there's our, our buddy. So industry benchmarks, we kind of blew past them. Our stuff is compelling, it's fun, it's active, it's family, it's action, it's, it's beautiful, it's warm. We're running it, you know, the Bay Area, it's freezing, it's crowded. We have nice stuff to show people, and, and they take interest in it. So paid social, Instagram is great. So here's where we did some updated intelligence on the audience. And we kind of, we sussed out like some new markets to try to like look at and to maybe up, up against. And that's where Yuba City came in. So Santa Rosa was really the biggest that showed up. I, I struggled with Santa Rosa. I don't know why, I just struggle with like Santa Rosa. But the numbers were like, you know, we've, we've got a lot of folks from Santa Rosa who've come here. So Santa Rosa, Sacramento, San Francisco, obviously are the larger markets that we prioritize. And then Yuba City kind of popped in there. So audience intelligence. A monthly blog, everybody in the board, David's heard me moan about our email. This is a lot of work. Email is something that takes a lot of resources, a lot of time. Our contacts are about 7,300 in 2022. We've almost doubled that since then, but that'll be next year's report. But we've, we've done a really good job with, with, with email marketing. I think our open rate is up there, 30%. Average open rate of most people's emails is about 20%. And our click-through rate is, is almost three times what an industry benchmark is. But, and it's a way for us to kind of get in, you know, into the market and really kind of cover around the lake. It's hard to cover everything, but we really try to suss out like, you know, what's new, what's happening. Next month, they're going to see a blog post on a perfect, a perfect day in Clear Lake. So we've got that lined up, and we had to make some tweaks, but this month, we're going to, I think next Tuesday, we'll drop that email, and we'll have a perfect day in Clear Lake. So the monthly blog, visitor map, you've all heard about the visitor map. We've actually redone it, but the visitor map was very successful. It got us out of county, and it didn't really, it made us money. It made us a little bit of money, but we didn't have to spend any of our stakeholder money on it. And it really covered the county, and it got us out. The big mistake we made is we thought 5,000 copies would be enough to have in county. And we were done with, we'd blown through 5,000 copies like by, it was like October. It was pretty painful, people, we didn't have any maps. So all of them were out of county this time. We just printed maps, and we got a ton in county. So you can pick them up at your chamber, you can pick them up at the chamber over in Lakeport, and all of our stakeholders have a lot of them boxed up. So marketing partnerships, North of Ordinary, that's our group that California basically puts us in a rural region. And ours is called the North Coast, but we market ourselves under the North of Ordinary banner. And that's Humboldt, Mendocino, and Del Norte. Great, we have a lot in common. It's, they're like brain trust for me to go to when I have questions. And they're really, we do, and our marketing is really good. It's really good. It's, I like it. It's, it's, it's good stuff. And we, we do get a lot of traffic. It's in our top like 15 in terms of referring traffic to our website. So it's a, it's a good thing for us to be doing, and it's pretty minimal outline. The other thing that they did is they got us into a travel and adventure show, which was in San Francisco in 2022. And those shows are really expensive. And the only way we could have been there is if we all partnered together and went. And they paid twice as much to be there as we did, which was really nice of them. They were really cool. It's, it's like, they, they took care of us. But we, and, and that produced, we got about 600 emails, live emails out of them. We ran sweepstakes on the floor of the trade show. We gave two nights away at the Otomans Hotel, two nights away at the Little River Inn in Mendocino, and on up the coast we went. And we were hawking it out in the street, we were hawking it in the aisles, and people were giving us their emails and jumping into this contest. And that's kind of what you want. You want a good database of people who are interested in travel. And it's a Bay Area market for us, so it's great. Unfortunately, in 2023, they canceled the show. It kind of shows you what's happened in hospitality. It was a huge show, shocked they canceled it, but I guess the numbers on it for the host that's running it just didn't work. So they gave us a, kind of this lame pass to go to their show in Denver, which we said, "No, we don't want to go to a show in Denver." And then along the whole, that show in Denver got snowed in. Never happened either. So I don't know if the travel shows are going to come back. I, I was kind of a convert after going. It's like, these things are great, but it just didn't, it didn't, I guess happened for them on the same thing. Another partnership we have at the, at the TAE is we support to the tune every year of $5,000, the Tourism Ambassadors, the Certified Tourism Ambassadors. Michelle Carson, this year won CTA of the Year. They're a really bright group, they're really energetic, they're really encouraging. They do a lot of great stuff to really help us out when times get tough or when, when I need something. I just had a media person in town, and I had to call on CTAs to do Jocelyn-led tours of Mount Penonti. I called Lisa down here in Clear Lake Campgrounds to do a two and a half hour kayak ride with, with the reporter and her dog. And, and then we had another Jocelyn-led tour of Clear Lake State Park. So, you know, it kind of gives me a base of somebody that I can call on. So we really like the program, it's a good program. Our BookDirect widget, so what is this? It's kind of wonky. So you have a website, and then, you know, we buy this widget that we just bolt onto our website called BookDirect. It's run by a whole nother company. They have their own backend, they have their own everything. But it was our way of getting our stakeholders, the people who were in the business of renting, you know, their rooms every night upfront and getting them high in priority in our advertising. We only started it through the middle of 2022. Took us a while to kind of figure it out, and we like the tool. It's working really well for us. It delivered about 5,000 searches in '22, and that number is up astronomically now. We're really, we're moving it. And we've kind of focused our new campaigns on, let's get everybody to look at all these properties. We do carousels of eight cool properties. We just, you know, it's a really great way for us to, to get people interested in places to stay in, in Lake County. We also sent Trudy Wakefield to a very good media event in the Presidio in San Francisco. These shows are, again, this stuff is kind of pricey to go to, but we winged it, we put it together, found us someplace for Trudy to stay really affordably. We got people to donate the gifts that we bought. There were about 50 media people that were there, solid media people. And out of it came a really good story in Seven by Seven Magazine, or website now, it's not much of a magazine. But it was, it was a positive story. And we still get people asking, you know, can we come to Lake County? And when we can, we can make it happen, we do. It's expensive. We also attended Visit California, the Outlook Forum, and that is a really key forum for anybody. I mean, we go to these forums, and we like try to stay as visible as we can. We want people to know that Lake County is in the business of destination marketing. We are open. And that's where we go, and we just underscore that with our presence. We, we, they're great shows, and we're going to continue to do that. The, the district renewal, the dreaded district renewal. I say that because I had to run this thing, and it was brutal. And you guys all know this because I came in here and I moaned when you accepted it. But I just want to say, we renewed the district, which we did not know our district was going to expire in five years when we started this thing. But now we, now we know it was. And so the district is now completely going to renew. It's going to sunset, the old one, sunset, just goes away on the end of this year. And then January 24, a new district starts with a new assessment at 2.5%, and it will be for 10 years. And I really think that that, you know, that's going to give us a little bit more traction. We've got three new properties opening, one, one legacy property, Penonti Harbor. We've got Potopia opening, and we got Getaway opening right down here south of you guys. And we really need these places. I mean, we've been at this now for five years, and we haven't seen a single new hotel room. So this is, is good. We're seeing, we think this is a positive trend. And that's what I have for you today, and I want to answer any questions and.
Thank you very much. It was, it was a very impressive presentation. I, I want, I'm grateful for you coming all the way down. Councilmember Sloton has a couple of questions for you.
With the lake being so low last year and now being full, is that, that's going to help, I presume?
Yeah, I mean, I just, I was telling someone, I just talked to, I was telling Russ, I talked to Priya in Clear Lake, oh, excuse me, Priya in Lakeport yesterday at our board meeting, and she had a record July. She attributes the lake. She said she's just got a lot more people coming. She's, all of her docks are open and her boats and on her ramp. So yes, the lake certainly helps. We had to pull a lot of stuff off of our website, and we had to downplay a lot of stuff towards the end because all the boat ramps were closed. It was pretty brutal.
Thank you. Councilmember Kramer?
Yeah, um, you, a couple of questions. The first one is, the last thing you mentioned, you said Uptopia, and what was the last thing?
Getaway.
And that is?
Getaway has purchased 457 acres on Morgan Valley Road.
All right, that's one. I know what you're talking about there.
Yeah.
That's the camp, it's like Uptopia, only more rural.
It is more rural. The other thing is, it's a little higher price point. It doesn't really focus on kind of the community aspect. It really focuses on people truly getting away. It's, there's no common area for people to attend there. It's, you go and you stay in one of their properties, and you're kind of there. And they're very successful as well. They've got like a great track record. This will be their 20th.
Really?
And they're really excited about it. They put a lot of money into it. If you've seen the plans, they're gorgeous.
Yeah, I, yeah. I saw the plans because I'm, another thing I'm involved with, looking at them for the, going for is going for the planning department. But I wasn't, quite honestly, it, it just didn't hit me that positively as, as you. I, I, hopefully it'll work out well.
Yeah, I know, first you've stayed in other, other states, and then just worked about it.
Yeah, it just kind of looked more like a, looked like my poor man's Uptopia to me. But that's just me.
Sounds like it's more expensive, he said.
Well, that's what he, that's what he's saying, but I've seen the plans, and it didn't look that way to me. Yeah. And a, and a couple, and three. And three wells, one way in and one way out, as I recall. Anyhow, that was it. But what I was more wanting to ask you is, what are the, let's say, the one, two, and three things that people are looking for when they come to Lake County? Like fishing first, or wine tours first, or what's, what's the order of?
You know, we, we kind of look at it in terms of our priority, in terms of our, our, basically our major pillars that we market to. One of them is lake, and it's recreational, the lake, whether it's, you know, it's just enjoying the lake recreationally or fishing, obviously really big. I've talked to fishermen that really, you know, really heavy-duty fishermen a lot. Everybody knows about Clear Lake.
Well, we're the number four in the nation, but.
So the fishing is, we don't lean a lot on fishing because they say that, you know, it's kind of already done. Although Bassmasters, I know, doing the story right now, we're working with them on some stuff, but. So fishing, wine tasting is another thing that we really know brings people in to the county. And then really, it's like our clear skies, our rural getaway, just a place to go, get away, be with your family, and hang out, and not worry about the kids playing outside all the time. Because a lot of things, you know, down in the Bay Area, live in places that are pretty crowded, they don't really get that. crowded and they don't really get that kind of experience. So they come up here for that. So we always talk about like our open spaces, our, you know, our, our festivals, our things you can get out and do, our beautiful sky, our clean air.
Haven't heard you mention hiking or biking.
You know, well, that's, hiking is part of that and biking are all in those. Um, but we don't have like a, we don't have a hiking or a biking like pillar that we talk about. Birding, people say we should do more birding and, and it's, that's a, that's a tough one too. But it's a great one.
Go, go to Anderson Marsh and you can bird all you want.
Yep, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Claffey has a question.
Thank you. Sorry, sorry, everyone. Um, so we, a couple of really nice projects coming online. How long did you say had been since, uh, we've had new accommodations here?
Well, I mean, depends on what you probably do accommodations.
Yeah.
So really, in, in terms of like brick and mortar hotels, nothing has been built since I've been doing this job in the last four years, four and a half years. There hasn't been a single property that's, you know, been developed and open.
Yeah.
However, in the short-term rental space, we know a lot of these homes during COVID got sold, a lot of lake homes, a lot of beautiful homes, and they are short-term rentals. And I think we all know we have, you know, compliance issues.
With, with some of those brick and mortars, how is, how important is it for an organization like yours to see new hotels open up?
Huge, huge. Huge, I mean, that just shows it as a lifeline. I mean, that's, that's it. I mean, that is, that is the future. It's, I mean, I watched during COVID as they opened all those properties in Upea. Painful, great for them, go travel us. But, you know, it's, it's hard because we don't really have a lot of new product for people to come use. We've got a lot of old outdated products. And so the more you get product, the more we're going to bring people. We've got the goods, we just need really need places for people to stay.
Excellent.
Last question, I, oh, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. And I, I just wanted to say, I, I know all this looks fun. Um, a lot of hard work goes into this and it, it's, it's one thing to, to write and take photos of folks kayaking. You don't get to do a lot of that. You do a lot of the grind behind the scenes and, and you do an amazing job at it. So thank you.
Yeah, and I want to echo what David just said. My next question for you is VRBO traffic. Um, it seems like we're getting more and more homeowners or vacationer, vacation homeowners that, um, are turning to the VRBO market. Um, are you seeing any of that in your trends or are you checking that?
We do, it's a hard one to watch.
Right.
We, we watch the numbers. I mean, Airbnb releases their data by county, um, every year. And the number in Lake County, they, they reported last time was like 12 million in revenue. I mean, that was far surpassed probably any of our brick and mortar properties. So it's a really, it's a, it's a, it's a tough, it's a tough one. Our.
It seems like a niche we're missing.
Well, I am really, our, um, ordinance for transmit occupancy taxes, as you mentioned, the word short-term rental. It says hotel, motel, and B and B. So why would you? You know, and I don't like it. I'm 10 and a half percent higher than everybody else. It's unfair. So I moan, like, you know, we were getting anywhere with the last tax collector, that was not going to happen. We all know that. We've got a new guy, Patrick, who's there. And so that's one of the goals is to really work with Patrick.
Right.
To say, hey, let's, let's figure this out. Here's a new ordinance. We have a new, I wrote a new ordinance, like, anyway, it's ready, it's shelf ready.
Thanks, thanks for that because I think that would really help. I, I hope people that are watching, people that are here present, um, understand just what that TOT can do for, uh, local jurisdictions, but also the revenue coming in from those dollars in our sales tax helps us to redo our roads, helps us to build parks and do the things, um, that really benefit our communities.
Very important.
Yeah, tourism is huge. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
So how do you keep track of the Airbnbs if they're not paying or they are paying? Is there a way to track that at all?
Oh, I have like sneaky ways. It's not really very.
Google.
There's Airbnb, uh, excuse me, there's AirDNA, no, AirDNA. AirDNA, which is, you know, a website that got me copied by people who don't work for Airbnb to try to say what's happening in the marketplace. But I find the data for Lake County to be skewed way out of what I think is realistic. Um, we were, we're working with our friends at, um, and it's been really frustrating. We're working with our friends at, um, BookDirect and David knows this and Alan knows this. And they've got a, they want, there's a, there's a widget that they, we could expand our search to include every short-term rental, um, in Lake County. But it's a dangerous thing. Um, because for starters, um, it, it, it has to work off of some crazy ordinances, which pull it like Cloverdale, because it's trying to work off a latitude, a longitude is the only way it will work. And then the second problem is, is the entire time the product's been in testing, it, it delivers error messages.
Yeah, okay.
And that, we can't have that on our site. We can't have something delivers. But when I go in there, when I go in there and I look, there's over 300 short-term rentals in Lake County.
Wow.
And I can tell you how many people we have paying TOT and it's about 110.
So we have a lot that we're missing. I think what people need to understand is that's being charged to the person who's renting. I don't, you know, maybe, maybe, maybe we need to do some kind of a marketing on that for our, for, for our people here and let them know, they're not having to pay for it, it's charged to the customer. So I think maybe that's a, a lot because they're like, oh, I don't want to pay that, so I'm not going to register. But if they knew that they weren't paying for it, maybe they would be more apt to do it. I think maybe there's some misunderstanding with people who are just getting into the business, um, that this isn't kind of a new market for some of these people.
Education and discussions.
Yeah, education and discussion. So maybe if you find these people that are doing it, maybe instead of getting right on them, send them a, a letter saying, hey, did you know, does this here, this is required? But you don't have to pay it. Guess what? Your clients do, you know? And I mean, you go anywhere, you're paying.
Now, so it's easier to do, but I will tell you, like, my listing gets dumped at the bottom of searches because I'm charging it. And they know exactly, they control their platform, it's proprietary, they don't need to put me anywhere up there because I'm 10 and a half percent higher. They want to show the cheapest room where you can.
Right.
Right.
Lake County and it, it's just so late, but.
But I, I thank you for, uh, your presentation again. Um, and for your work to make sure those ordinance and everything, uh, aren't in conflict and we can move forward. Thanks a lot.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for your report.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I could just make one clarifying comment, I think what.
You're going to anyway, go ahead.
Mr. Fisher is talking about, related to, um, vacation rental compliance is largely focused on the unincorporated area. I mean, the city does have an ordinance, um, related to this and, um, you know, it's, it's somewhat easy to slip through the cracks because you can change platforms and so forth. But, um, we are collecting the TID assessment and TOT from a number of vacation rentals in the city.
Yeah, I know you are. I just, I'm seeing a lot that aren't being collected on. Um, and it does throw it off because those rates are so low for night, night stays. Thank you again. Yep, all right. Moving on to item F, public comment. This is a time for people to address the city council on items that are not on the agenda. Please be aware that the city council members and myself cannot act on or respond to your questions, uh, as the Brown Act does not allow us to do that. However, if we feel there is someone who might be able to answer your question, for staff available in the room, um, you may be directed to contact a staff member who could help you, um, either after the meeting, um, or at a break. So with that, I do have a request from Ms. Margaret Meek, lives, uh, in Monterey Drive, and she would like to speak to us about a question she has with the planning department. Ms. Meek, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for listening. A little quick question. Before 2017, I was completing my certification as an elementary school teacher. I was determined element, till the Sarno elementary kept completing my interim year with my own fourth grade class. When I bought my property in 2012 at 3855 Monterey Drive, it was on an incorporated apartment, clearly covered, on the only floor. Ms. Meek, can you speak directly into the microphone, please? Or pull it down?
Thank you.
Thank you. Why I'm here is I received an email from Recover California that after two and a half years working with, with this organization, housing and urban development, to receive a grant that would help me rebuild my home, I was suddenly ineligible. The reason stated were I get six months to apply for the grant project clause to bypass the new zoning laws. I am questioning this decision. Now I realize that the topic is not on the agenda, so please put this matter on the agenda, addenda, or direct me to the people that I need to get a hold of. Thank you.
Thank you. Check. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Meek. I'm sorry that we had a problem with the audio. Um, I didn't see any other requests for public, um, input, but if there's anyone who's sitting in the room raising their hand, you're welcome to come up and speak. Ms. Lopez?
I did fill out a form there.
When you fill it out.
I did.
You can give that to me.
Okay.
It's okay, go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me? Because this doesn't seem like it's working.
We can hear you over the, over the audio.
Well, can everybody else? Okay.
There you go.
I'll try to talk loud. Uh, I'm Kay Lopez, uh, and this is regarding the, um, animal shelter in Clear Lake. Your July 20th city council meeting had audio issues where the speakers could not be heard clearly. So what I was trying to get across was you have an organization, North Bay Animal Services, that is under contract with the city of Clear Lake that refuses to take in Clear Lake stray dogs due to lack of kennel space. And yet, the same organization went to a shelter 100 plus miles away to Stockton to rescue 20 dogs and 30 cats, which were then taken to their Petaluma Shelter. Meanwhile, their shelter in Clear Lake was and is extremely overcrowded, turning dogs away to be hit by cars or left to starve. Why, when the Petaluma Shelter had kennel space, did they not take in the Clear Lake dogs who were given no relief and continued to be housed in a hot warehouse in spite of being told by the city manager to remove the dogs from the warehouse last April? Were there no other rescues between Petaluma and Stockton that could have assisted in this rescue so that Clear Lake, which this organization is under contract, could be given some relief? But to add insult to injury, there's the PR write-up with North Bay patting themselves on the back with, and I quote, "At the break of dawn, we sprung into action. Without a moment's hesitation, we pledged our support and assistance like a cast of superheroes." That was their wording and not mine. Why couldn't they have sprung into action like a cast of superheroes for their dogs in Clear Lake, who continue to be turned away for lack of kennel space? Recently, I was made aware of an injured dog where the reporting party was told it can't be taken in. So let me, me remind you that 597F of the penal code states, "All injured animals are to be taken to the vet. It is the duty of all officers, whether animal control or police. You must take that animal to the vet. There are no excuses. So without a moment's hesitation, like a cast of superheroes, get that dog or cat to the vet." And can I get an update on the horse? Did he survive? The horse that they rescued? Does anybody?
I don't know.
Or can I not ask?
I couldn't answer anyway. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, all right, well, see you in two weeks.
All right, yes, ma'am. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council during public comment at this time? Madam Clerk, anyone on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So, well, and moving on to item G, our consent agenda. Does anyone have a, an item they would like to have discussed that's currently on the consent agenda?
I, I have a clarification on item number seven. I think the planning, current planning commissioners are, are wrong.
Yes, they are.
So let's pull item seven off the consent agenda. Any other changes? Is there anyone from here in, in the room that would like to have a item pulled from the consent agenda? Anyone on Zoom, Madam Clerk?
There are no hands raised on the Zoom.
Thank you very much. With the exception of item seven, can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Kramer, a second by Councilmember Sloten. All those in favor accepting the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, if any? Very well, it passes unanimously. Mr. Flora, if we could open up with item seven, notification of expiring committee appointments.
If I might make a comment.
Go ahead, Councilmember Sloten.
Uh, the, uh, the five names that are shown on the Clear Lake planning commission are incorrect.
Well, two of the names are correct.
Two of them, yeah.
So I'm not sure what happened on that, but, um, you know, for the record, it reflects that, uh, Mr. Smalley and, um, Mr. Ingalls would be the, uh, replace the last two commissioners that are on the list.
So that, that would happen different expiration dates.
Right, I mean, I, I don't think your action here isn't impacting any of the planning commissioners.
No.
Appointments, but for accuracy, yes, it should be corrected.
Thank you very much. Can I have a motion to accept the appointments as clarified?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Sloten and a second by Councilmember Kramer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Madam Clerk, it passes unanimously. All right. Pardon me, I'm experiencing a technical difficulty of my own. All right, moving on to business, item H, discussion and consideration of support for affordable housing projects by Chelsea Investment Corporation. Mr. Flora?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember. So the council is, uh, well aware of the proposed affordable housing project on 18th Avenue. It's, it's been a, a bit of a puzzle to help them, um, get the financing package necessary, uh, to begin construction. Um, this was one of the property swap, uh, projects. It's now, it was county-owned land, it's now state-owned land. And they did the RFP and selected Chelsea Investment, uh, out of Southern California to develop the, the project. I could address more, uh, questions if you would like, but, um, I, I believe in large part of the challenge for this project has been, well, there's been an increase in competitiveness for tax credit financing, which normally funds these projects. But the, the irony of the, the structure being state-owned land, I think, has, has hampered the scoring for this project through a number of state grants. And they haven't been able to be as competitive for some of the funding sources as, say, the Danco project was. And so anyway, you know, we've been working with our state representatives. They have made some changes to some of the funding programs, and we're expecting this year's application to be more competitive. The council approved a resolution last year, actually two renditions of it for the same program, which is a little different. We're expecting them to be more competitive, as I mentioned. But so there was a change. There's actually two resolutions that were part of the action that we're asking the council to do tonight, 2023-35 and 2023-36, which you should have a hard copy. It is uploaded into the portal as well now. But this is related to the LG MG grant application. The structure's a little bit different. We would actually be the applicant under this scenario, which we weren't before, and do a pass-through similar to what CCG funding is on this. But that's something that should help the project house. So that's just kind of a high-level overview. I'll try to address any questions you have. I think there's some representatives of Chelsea here that might be able to talk a little bit more about this. But they're asking for 10 million, which is the maximum amount through this funding program.
Thank you, Mr. Flora. Any immediate questions by council? Make sure you're speaking into mics so everyone can hear. Any other questions? I'd like to open it up for the public, for any public comment on this project. Any questions or comments in the Zoom?
There is a hand raised on the Zoom.
Thank you. Go ahead, please.
Let's see, we have Lorenzo Alvarez and Teresa Pakowski.
Hi, my name is Teresa. Oh, sorry, there's a little background. My name is Teresa Pakowski. I'm a development associate at Chelsea Investment Corporation. Lorenzo Alvarez and I are here to answer any questions if you have any regarding the project or the funds we're requesting from HCD. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for being present during this item. And we'll direct any questions to you. Any other questions from public? Are both of those folks together, Madam Clerk, with Chelsea?
I believe so, yes.
All right.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Is there anything you wanted to say, Lorenzo?
No, I just would like to, you know, second what Teresa said. I would also like to thank Alan and his team for all the back-and-forth for the past few weeks, working towards this financing due date for the application on August 14. So I just want to give a hats off and a kudos. I really appreciate the support.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Seeing no other public comment, I will close that for public comment and bring it back to council for deliberation and action. Councilmember Overton?
Yeah, I just have a question, since this is more competitive. What's going to happen to this project if they don't happen to get it? It just doesn't go forward? Or is there something else we're looking at, helping them?
Well, I mean, I think, you know, there's a lot of money out there. We have went and helped them, you know, look at a number of different funding programs. You know, there's reasons why this is more attractive. I mean, I think, I don't want to speak for Chelsea, but, you know, I believe that they're committed to this project. And, you know, if they weren't successful here, we look at other funding sources. But, you know, we have worked closely, in particular with Senator McGuire's office, in influencing some changes to the rules this year. And one of the challenges with what they call the excess sites, which are these state-owned properties, they have worked in some additional points. So the excess sites' properties score a little bit higher and that type of thing. So I don't know what to say other than that.
So if this doesn't go through, we're going to continue helping them with other things if we can.
And I don't know, Lorenzo or Teresa, if there's anything you want to add.
Yeah, I can speak to that. Was that Joyce?
Yes.
Yes, Councilmember Overton.
Councilmember Overton, nice to meet you. Yeah, so we have a number of funding sources that we are looking at beyond LGMG. The next step would be the State Home Fund, which is scheduled to come out in mid to late September and follow that path with a final hope that we would go in for round one, 9% tax credit next year to finalize and then, you know, start the closing and construction. But that's if we get LGMG and we get State Home and we get the 9%. So all the ducks have to be in a row for that to happen. But we, with this first duck, we actually really believe we're competitive for LGMG more so than we were last year. So we're really looking forward to it.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for being here. I did want to, just for clarity, we're talking about a property that exists or will exist on the 18th Avenue above Adventist Health Clear Lake Hospital. Do you have an idea yet how many units are proposed in the project?
Yes, I do. So we have a proposed 80 units. And of those 80 units, one would be a manager unit. I can go over the high level of the project if you guys would like to hear more. So we're looking at a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units, ranging from 30% to 60% AMI, arranged on a four-two-story building design right now. Now, the designs are pretty early, so, you know, I don't want to get nailed down to that. But we are looking at two-story, four-two-story buildings with that mix, and 146 parking spaces, as well as a fifth building would be solely dedicated to community. So there'd be a community room, there'd be laundry room, a community kitchen, a community computer room, leasing office, as well as an outdoor tot lot for the families who live there, and a potential for some type of a sporting court. So we're not exactly sure what type. Currently, the plans show a half-court basketball court, but we're not married to that idea if, let's say, the community for something else. We can hear and get some feedback on that as well.
I appreciate that. Like transparency, and I think it's important for people to understand what the project's scope is. And because we have such a need for housing in our community, particularly after the big fires that, you know, took place years ago, we still haven't recovered from that. So thank you for that overview. There being no other questions, I'll bring it back to council for action.
We're going to do this in two different votes, correct?
We can do it in one.
Just reading both resolutions at once then, or?
You don't need to read them. You could just adopt a resolution by the numbers.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the two resolutions. Resolution number 2023-35 and 2023-36.
A second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Kramer, and a second by Councilmember Overton. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously, Madam Clerk. Moving on to item nine, adoption of resolution 2023-33 authorizing sale or disposal of any surplus city property. Mr. Flora.
Director Labe will give a brief introduction to this item.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. The city has an older grader at the old public works yard. This grader is old, outdated, and noncompliant, is no longer able to be used. We bought a new one back, I believe, in 2017. And in our transition from the old public works yard to the new one, we began to sort and dispose of things that were no longer able to be used, with the grader being one of those. And since it is over $10,000, we need to bring it to council to be able to surplus it at an auction. Staff recommends that the council move to adopt resolution 2023-33 authorizing the sale or disposal of surplus city property.
Thank you, Madam Director. Any questions on this item? I'd like to open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to address the council on this item, please step forward. Seeing none in the Zoom, Madam Clerk.
There are no hands raised on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. I'll bring it back to council.
I move that we adopt resolution 2023-33 authorizing the sale or disposal of surplus city property.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Sloten, and a second by Vice Mayor Claffey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or nay, if opposed. Passes unanimously, Madam Clerk. Item 10, consideration of designation of voting delegates and alternates for the League of California Cities Annual Conference in September. Ms. Swanson.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. The League of California Cities Annual Conference is scheduled this year for September 20th through the 22nd. The conference is scheduled to be held in person in Sacramento, and each council member is registered to attend. At this meeting, the league membership considers and takes action on resolutions that establish the league policy. In order to vote at the annual business meeting, the city council must designate a voting delegate. In the event that the designated voting delegate is unable to serve, the council can appoint up to two alternates. We have not received information on the issues coming up for vote before the league delegates, but it is appropriate at this time for the council to appoint one council member as the voting delegate and up to two alternates as voting alternate delegates.
Thank you. Any questions by council this time? Any questions on this item from members of the public? Any questions from anyone watching in Zoom?
There are no hands raised on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
And as I recall, I believe all of us are scheduled to attend that annual conference. Ms. Overton, you are typically the delegate.
I am, and I'm assuming that August 18th is our regional meeting. I'm assuming they're going to be discussing what's going to be the resolutions that they're going to want to oppose or go for. Because there was a big, long list at the last meeting. So let's see what the update is on at this meeting, so.
Right. Are you interested in remaining as the delegate?
I would be happy to.
Thank you. Mr. Kramer, I believe you are the second designee.
I was. I think we talked about either Vice Mayor Claffey or myself being that designee.
You guys can draw straws or arm wrestle, I don't care.
Okay.
I think we're asking for two.
We are, two alternates. So you're both good? Very good. Bring it back to you for a motion. Anybody?
I don't know what to prove, actually. Designated Councilwoman Overton as the voting delegate with Councilman Kramer as first alternate and Vice Mayor Claffey as third alternate. Second alternate.
I third, oh, second.
That was a rough one, but we got through it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, real quick before you move on. I think we will be needing to cancel the city council meeting that week. So we'll plan on canceling it. And then if there's some business that needs to be taken up, we'll just have a special meeting sometime.
There is a LAFCO meeting at Wednesday, too.
I don't have the authority to cancel that one, but.
I'll be there.
All right. Well, I appreciate your heads up on the calendar there. Mr. City Manager, what is the date of that council meeting again?
It's September 21st.
Okay, so September 21st, this body will not be meeting. The meeting will be canceled, so we may attend the League of Cities Conference for educational and collaborative reasons. All right, moving on to item I, City Manager and Councilmember Reports. Mr. Flora.
Just a few quick things. Public Works Department did receive our new excavator last week. So that's exciting to them. And you can see that renovation has started here at City Hall. There are a few bumps here and there, but pretty much all the demolition work has been complete. Walls are going up over there. The contractor's expecting to be done in three months, so hopefully that is true. Chief Hobbs had some noisy jackhammering in his office, but he's surviving so far. The chip seal bids for this year's work, we're expecting to go out yet this week? Tomorrow. Next week, most of the work on the dam road, South Center Drive project has been done. But the, so the new pavement's been done, but there's going to be a micro-surface on dam road extension. That's all happening next week. And then the striping the following weekend, and then that project will be complete before school starts. I guess the only other thing that I really wanted to mention is related to the Conoco State County Water District. So we just got a letter this afternoon. They had one of their board members resign, and they have a period of time to appoint a new board member, which they failed to do. And there was a little bit of a mix-up. But the short story is, it's the city council's responsibility at this point to appoint a new member, call for a special election. And so it has to be done by basically the end of August. So what we're recommending is just get a quick consensus to go ahead and put out an application like we do for other committee appointments. We'll accept those, and then the council could review and make an appointment at the next meeting in August, if that sounds agreeable to everyone.
And the jurisdictional boundaries need to be within the Conoco State Water District, is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Flora.
I guess if there's nothing else, that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Flora. Pardon?
Are we looking for consensus? Are we all shaking our head?
Yeah, we have the consensus.
We need to do that, so.
Right. I don't think we have a choice. Ms. Overton, any important meetings you've attended?
No, because I was gone for three weeks. So, but as I said, I'm going to be going to the Redwood Empire Division meeting in Fortuna this time, which hopefully, if it's hot here, it's cool there. So, and I think we'll get an update on all the resolutions that they'll be putting forth, and I'll bring those back to us for consensus on what you guys would like to do with those. Outside of that, I was very impressed with our Lake County Tourist District. I think they're doing a great job. I really do. I was very impressed with that. I'm really glad that we're involved in that and that you guys sit on that and keep it going. So I really want to thank their efforts. I didn't really get to do that, but they do a great job. And I see Clear Lake here and there when I go different places. And I think we're getting a really positive, more positive attitude from people now, because it didn't used to be that years ago. So I see the change in everything. So the marketing is doing, I think, a fabulous job. So, you know, I just want to say that. And I really, I also wanted to just say that we honored our Public Works and our Conoco Unified School District maintenance people. Thank everybody for coming to that. And it was nice to honor them. They've worked really hard. And so I really thank you guys for stepping up and working with them to make that happen for them. So, and it was our honor to serve you guys. So thank you for that, too.
Very good. Councilmember Kramer.
Yes, a couple of things. I'm still going to wish Councilmember Sloten a happy birthday, even though you jumped the gun on me, Mayor Burdock. As I waited, I didn't do it on Facebook or any of those other things. Wanted to do it personally. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Moving right along, of course, out here on, at Austin's Park, you'll see the stage being prepared tomorrow night, Saturday night, and Sunday night at 7:00 PM, performances by Shakespeare at the lake of the play Measure for Measure. It was, it played last week at Lakeport. It's got some terrific reviews. It's free. There will be refreshments served as well at three different vendors, including Councilwoman Overton's catering company. We'll be serving the liquid refreshments plus tray hose here in town. We'll have hot dishes and rock and roll ice cream. We'll be there all three nights, I just found out today, with their ice cream. So we've got them all covered. I'd like to certainly invite the public to be there. It's a free showing, and it's supposed to be an excellent play. So I hope to see everybody out there. Then I was going to make an announcement on the chamber mixer, but I'll leave that to you, Mayor Burdock, as you're the acting president of the chamber. Well, all right. August 15th, no, no, I'm going to let you do it. You go ahead. I'm done.
Mr. Sloten, Councilmember Sloten.
I don't have a whole lot, except I want to announce that the new chancellor for Woodland College, or excuse me, the Yuba College District, will be in town on the 23rd for the reception at the college. I've met the gentleman a couple of times now, and hopefully he'll pay as much attention to the Lake County campus as the previous interim chancellor. So it looks positive. And I attended a board meeting of the Yuba College Foundation yesterday. Where it shows that we can do a lot better raising money for our local college.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Unfortunately, I was traveling the last couple of weeks here, so nothing to report.
Nothing wrong with traveling with your family and enjoying some new sights, sir. I really don't have anything to report, except for the luau at the creek has been moving forward. I'm really grateful to Coedak PD. I want to announce that on October 7th is their K-9 dinner. We had a bit of a conflict on the date, because we were both wanting to do our luau and the K-9 dinner on that. We're discussing that at chamber now of moving that date. And I'm sure Councilmember Kramer, our chairman for that event, will do well in getting that done and on the docket. So we put out a save the date. We're going to update that soon. And I just hope everybody can attend both, because that's the whole reason why we have a chamber, is we want to support our local activities. And we definitely want to be supportive of our local K-9 officers and their handlers. And Chief, thanks for the work you're doing there. I appreciate your leadership. Again, want to thank you for a very successful National Night Out. Can I put you on the spot and just kind of explain the history of National Night Out? Why it takes place, and that it's an annual event? I think it's pretty regular even on the calendar. when law enforcement across the country pull together to do this event. Thank you. Go ahead.
Yes, so we've done it. It's only the second time we've done it. It started decades ago. It's just on the East Coast, as an event to get law enforcement agencies out in the community, engaging with people living in their communities, doing basically barbecues or block parties, and, you know, getting out there, meeting the people, talking to them. And it's kind of expanded from that area in the East Coast, and now it's something that's done across the country. The night we did it, most agencies do it on the first Tuesday in August. We did it on Tuesday night. There was about, or over almost 600 other jurisdictions that did it at the same time. So it's, it's a pretty good event. As the mayor talked about earlier, we had a really good turnout this year. We did it two years ago at Highlands Park, and we thought then we had a pretty good turnout, which was good turnout then. But this, this year, we had probably at least double the people. Definitely helped to be doing it next to the splash pad that was recently completed. That was a big selling point for people. So no, it was definitely a good event. We had a huge turnout. Like you said, on the food, we'd, we'd prepared to have about food for 300 people, and then we, a little ways into it, we realized that wasn't going to cut it, so we went and got food for another 200 people. We used about half that, so we used food for about 400 people. So it was a really nice event. We had a bunch of our officers there just to talk with people about issues in their neighborhood, issues with law enforcement, anything in general, and it was a really good, really good event for us.
It was. Also want to commend everyone that participated from your department. It was great to see officers playing basketball with some of the kids, sharing, you know, what they do, and seeing the comments on social media. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend, because I was at work, but the, the comments were very positive. You know, I really appreciated those. You know, now my son or daughter wants to be a police officer when she grows up or he grows up, so a great recruiting tool.
Yes.
Perhaps. Anyway, always good at that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to jump in here. I had asked, assumed that when I gave you the floor to announce something in the chamber, you were going to do the one that's a little bit more in the nearer future, our mixer, which will be on August next Tuesday, or two, two weeks, August 15th, that down at Highlands Park, just to get together, have fun, barbecue-type thing, so.
Come down, enjoy some hot dogs, I believe.
Hey, hot dogs.
And meet your business people.
Hot dogs. Okay. And some refresh, water, liquid refreshments as well. And also, I was, I did get an opportunity to attend MA Night Out, National Night Out, and, and you guys, you did a terrific job, all of you. I got to, I got to see Captain Peterson, who was bossing his brother.
He's got a promotion. Good job.
Excuse me, Lieutenant.
Field promotion.
I don't, I don't know what those things on your shoulders mean. Anyhow, directing his brother cooking the hot dogs, did a, did a great job of directing, and his brother was doing a terrific job helping on the, on the cooking. So again, my congratulations to you, too. It was a great event, and I think you made it. I think a lot of folks see our, our Clear Lake Police Department as the great unit that it is and the, and the community-oriented unit that it is. So congratulations from me as well.
Thank you, sir. All right, that concludes that portion. Any future agenda items, things that we need to address? Very good. Seeing none, I will ask that we adjourn for a five-minute break, and then we'll reconvene under closed session. Thank you all very much.